You had some.
Yeah, and we are joined by Deandra Hosey, Ward two, Alder Woman, the city of Byram, attorney, graduate of the Mississippi College School of Law, University of Southern Mississippi and Mississippi College. So, thank you so much for taking some time for us today. We're in the government career cluster and we've got a room full here with us at Velma Jackson High School. And we're recording this for all of our friends in Madison County Schools, at Ridgeland High School, Rosa Scott, Madison Central, Germantown High School, the Academic Options Center and our YouTube channel. So, thank you again so much for taking some time for us today.
My pleasure. Thank you for the invitation.
And before we get into what it all, what all you do over there in the city of Byram and with your law office, let's start with your, your college path, because this class is college and career readiness. We'd like to hear about the college background of our guests. So, take us through your, your college experience and how that led to where you are now.
Okay, I'm from a very small town, Bay Springs, Mississippi. Didn't know any lawyers or politicians when I was growing up. When we were great, when we were in high school, the OJ Simpson trial was the thing. So, really, the only attorney that I knew was Johnny Cochran. And I, and then that show Al and Met Beal was popular during that time. And she was a young female attorney and she always wore cute clothes to the office. And they made the practice of law look really glamorous. And I thought I wanted to be a pediatrician. Then I realized I didn't like high schools nor math. But I was really good at words and writing. So, I eventually decided to go to law school. So, I graduated from Bay Springs High School in nineteen ninety-eight and I played basketball. Okay, good enough to get a scholarship to Jones County Junior College. And then I went to Mississippi College, played ball there as well. And, and went to grad school at USM. I think we first met at Mississippi College undergrad and then we both went to USM grad school as well. After graduate school, I actually worked for one legislative session at the Mississippi Legislature. And I had the opportunity to stay there. They were like, well, if you want to stay on, you can. It was just for like a, just, they had a job opening as a laptop, laptop technician, just for that one session. But everybody was telling me, well, people that come on for the session, they always stay. And they gave me the opportunity to stay, but I was like, no, I'm going to law school. So, I got into law school and Mississippi College School of Law graduated in two thousand eight. It was a great experience. Looking back on it, I really miss it. It was, it was an adrenaline, adrenaline rush the entire time. So, I feel like I became smarter and I just learned a lot in law school and I'm grateful for the opportunity. So, after I graduated law school, passed the bar exam, had several different job opportunities. Two in the federal government, I worked for the VA for a very short time. And then I worked for the Social Security Administration as a staff attorney for a very short time. And ultimately went in to work for a private law firm. Fast forward today, I'm now self-employed in Byram. After being self-employed for about maybe a year or two, I ran for the Board of Alderman here in Byram. And I was successful in my first election. And I'm on my third term and each term is four years. So, the first year was contested, the second year I was uncontested. And then the third, well, the, the first election I was uncontested, the second election I was uncontested. And the third election, I was also uncontested. I tried to work really hard and be very responsive to my constituents whenever they called me with their concerns. And being a full-time attorney and a local late official at the same time. I don't always respond as fast as I would like to, but citizens are very appreciative and understanding. And they always appreciate when you call back. So, that's my brief background.
Now, I did want to talk briefly about, because we have a lot of athletes in here. We have some female athletes, some basketball volleyball players, some band members, football players, basketball players. And I think it's important to understand the transition from a high school athlete to a junior college and a college athlete is night and day. The amount of commitment that is required, the, still the academic standard that you are held to. You can't just skip class. You practice literally all the time. You are on the road out of state to travel for games and you can't just show up when you want to. So, talk a little bit about that commitment, just for the ones we have here, especially that have dreams of playing sports on the next level.
Everything that you said is true, but I did, I don't know any other way. Because high school prepares you for all of that that goes on in college and then some. So, I was a pretty good student in high school. And in high school, I played more than, well, I did track, I was in a show choir oddly enough. I would have been a cheerleader, but I was like, oh, nobody really pays attention to cheerleaders. But I, I do like cheerleading as a sport, so don't get me wrong on that. But I just decided to, to focus on basketball, being that I'm five-ten. But cheerleading has changed since nineteen ninety-eight in the nineties, we were in high school. It's definitely a competitive sport now. But in terms of the ability to multitask, nothing prepares you better in terms of multitasking in the workforce and in your life as an adult than being a student athlete. Because you have to focus on your sport, go to practice every day. You come home, you're tired, you gotta go to the games and then maintain good grades in school. And high school prepares you for that. So, if you want to, if your plan is to go to college and be a successful student athlete, pay attention to all of those things that are going to help you right now. Pay attention to your grades. Make sure that your grades are number one, first of all, because you can't play sports without, without passing. So, if you're excelling in that area of your life in high school, then you're going to be able to do that in college too. Now, college, it is more intense, but I feel like playing a sport in college gives you a greater opportunity to succeed than, than if you were not playing a sport in college, because you kind of have a babysitter every day. The coaching staff, they're going to make sure and they're going to hold you accountable if you're not doing what you're supposed to do. So, look at the opportunity as playing your sport as a privilege. Because if you're playing a sport in, in high school and you're blessed to be able to play that sport in college, then you are definitely going to graduate, they're going to make, they're going to see to it. They're going to make sure that you're in all the, the best classes. At the same time, don't be hesitant in terms of pursuing the, the more difficult career paths. Like if you want to be a doctor, don't let your desire to be a doctor be put on a back burner, because you also want to be a basketball player or football player or cheerleader. Look at the ability to maintain your grades, to take the harder classes while you're playing that sport as an opportunity to show that you can multitask and that you can excel, even though you have a lot of responsibilities on your plate. Because playing that sport is going to give you a higher chance of getting accepted into your professional, professional school. If you want to be a physical therapist, whatever you want to do that requires more than a regular four years of college. If you can excel in undergrad while also playing a sport, that is going to show that you're a well-rounded individual. And that is going to enhance your opportunity to get into the professional school.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, and I know they get sick of hearing the story, but I tell it all the time. I'll never forget, we were, I was at Southern Miss and they had played a football game on a Thursday night on ESPN in Birmingham against UAB the night before. And they got home, I think, two something in the morning. And I'm walking on campus the next day around eight AM and I see Marvin Young, who has scored two touchdowns the night before, walk in the class. I'm like, dude, what time y'all get back? And he goes, man, it don't matter. I gotta take this test. So, the, the academic standard, it's not just, you know, I'm going to chill all day because I had a game last night. The academic standard is rigorous, but the, but the, the rewards are very high, like you said.
Yeah, yeah, and your ability to multitask, if you're an athlete, a student athlete, I mean, you just automatically know, you just automatically do it. You don't think about, oh, I got this to do tomorrow, this to do the next day. Like you don't, you just, you don't get freaked out over those different schedules, because it's built into, into you. It's ingrained in you, it's a part of your life. So, you know that you can excel. It's just a part of your life. It's just automatic. Like now, I guess that's how I ultimately ran for a public office, because I've just always been one of those folks that did a lot of stuff at the same time. So, it's just kind of, it's, it's who you become.
Yeah, and that's a great segue, because I wanted to talk about that. You know, I was just telling the kids here that your local officials, to me at least, are even more important than who is in the federal offices, because where you live affects you every day. Your, your city council, your mayor, your county supervisors, your, and even your, even your state offices, to me, have way more effect on your life than who a president is in Washington DC. Because, you know, living in Mississippi most of my life, I was telling the kids, I can remember all the way back to President Reagan. The only time I ever remember president ever coming to Mississippi was when they were running for office, for reelection or election, or there was a disaster. It is not something that affects us near as much as the media makes us think. But city government, like you do in Byram, really affects people's everyday lives. And you guys have your hands in so much, it's not even your full-time job. So, talk a little bit about what the city of Byram and what other city governments, like in Madison, Ridgeland, Jackson, do and how it is so important to be aware of who is your, who was on your city council.
Yeah, everything that you say is one hundred percent true. Here, as a local politician, my neighbors are my constituents. You know, they know where I live. They see me in Kroger and Walmart. They walk up to me. They call my person on a cell phone. So, certainly the local politicians, I believe, is probably the hardest job in terms of, in terms of politics. Because your constituents, your local constituents, they hold you accountable and they, they expect results. So, the Byron Board of Alderman, there are two types of city municipal governments. There's a city council, council former, mayor council former of government and a board of Alderman mayor former of government. In Byram here, we have a board of Alderman and a mayor, a weak mayor, strong, pardon me, strong mayor, weak board. Jackson has the council mayor form of government. They have a strong mayor, weak council. In actual, in actual reality, both, in both forms, the mayors are really the strong, the strong components of the city. Because a council person or Alder person cannot call a public works director or a public works employee and say, hey, go fix that pothole. It's called a separation of powers. We're, the Board of Alderman is in the legislative branch of government. The mayor is the executive. And so, we can't reach over into his branch and, and tell his folks what to do. We cannot control the day-to-day operations. In fact, it's illegal for a council person or a board member to call an employee and tell that employee what to do. We can't, that would be controlling day-to-day operations. What we do, what the board and the council does is make policy essentially. For example, the marijuana, the new marijuana legislation, cannabis, medical marijuana. The Byron Board of Alderman could have voted to not allow cannabis sales here in Byram, but we did not. We let that, we, we sat on it, didn't take any action on it. As a result, we do have Rivers Remedy here in Byram, whereas Clinton, they made a vote. They, their, their legislative branch made a vote to not allow the cannabis facility in their city. And so, it was the legislature passed a law to where if your board or council denies it, then the citizens can vote. The citizens, they, they had an election and the citizen voted it down. But that's just an example of the council and a board making policy decisions. So, that's really what a council and a board member does. We, we make, we make the laws, we make policy decisions. But of course, we confer with the mayors. Anytime someone wants to do something like bring a marijuana facility to your city, the first person they're going to go to is the mayor. So, in that instance, the mayor and council works together. Our mayor talked to us about how he felt about the decision. And the Clinton's mayor talked to his, his council about what he felt about medical marijuana. So, even though the mayor doesn't make policy, the mayor is really still, naturally run the city.
Yeah, and you guys also had somewhat of a hand in the zoning issues with the building of the Walmart, the building of the new restaurants. Or you brought jobs into the city. And I was explaining to the kids before we came on how important that is, because when you have businesses come there, that's more tax money that goes to the city. And then in turn, the city is able to provide services to have departments to hire more employees.
Right, right. And, and also, when something goes on, when a citizen needs something, more than likely, they're going to go to their council member or their board representative. So, and then what I, if I can't handle it on my own, in response, I will go to the mayor. Mayor, could you, could the public works help with this? We're under Jackson's water. So, for example, constituent has called, has had a busted water line in his yard since November. So, I had to call the mayor to report it to the mayor. You know, this guy called me complaining about this busted water line. I took a video and I gave all the information to the mayor so that he could ask the public work, for the works director to, to work on it.
Yeah, and I just got a couple of things before I get to the students' questions. But one, you, you mentioned the public works. What are some other areas that a city would provide employment for, for anybody that was looking for employment? Because every, every position in a government, actually, very few of the positions in a government are actually elected. There's people that have been working with the city of Byram since before you were in office and before the mayor was in office, and they'll continue to be. So, what are some of those areas that a city would employ?
Right, there's public works, there's law enforcement, we have a chief of police. The, they, the police department has its own office staff, assistants, police dispatchers. They have the, the, each department has his or her own team. The public works director has an office staff, executive, executive assistants. We have a code enforcer, somebody that rides around and make sure that everybody is, you know, doing the things that they're supposed to do in terms of the municipal ordinances. We have a permit department. So, public works is not just filling up potholes, fixing potholes. We have firemen, police chief and the fire department, the fire chief has his own staff. Again, executive assistants and things of that nature. And, and a parks and ricks. So, there's a park director, here in Byram, we're smaller than other cities and we're a new city. So, we don't necessarily have a park director right now. Hopefully, as we grow and in our future, we help, we'll have a park director. But we do have an individual that's over that department per se. And he's helping us build our sports program, which, you know, clearly, I'm an advocate for. I want us to have softball, soccer, cheerleading, football, basketball, of course, and, and all the whole nine. So, he's helping us build in that department. We don't have an economic development team, but larger cities do. Madison has a completely separate economic development department. I think Flowood does as well, and maybe Clinton and Ridgeland. I think, I'm pretty sure Ridgeland does. And some, some folks will like contract an economic developer to go out and recruit businesses and come to their city. At one point, we were paying a separate company to come, to go out and recruit retail. And engineers are very important to cities as well. Some cities have engineers on staff. We, we contract engineers to, to come and work on problem, problems with our city. Architects, landscape architects are really important to cities. That's another career path that you might want to take. And those are areas where you can not only make a lot of money if you work for a company, but those are areas where you can like, if you become an architect, landscape architect or an engineer, you can also be an entrepreneur. So, I mean, the opportunities are vast in terms of city government.
Yeah, and that also goes back to the economic development you have of bringing, of, of the property value, bringing the businesses. Because that tax money allows y'all to have a higher budget and be able to hire more people. That, that benefits everybody. It benefits the owner of the property. It benefits the, benefits the constituents to have it a place to shop. And it also benefits the city to be able to hire another, hire another fire, fire person, to hire another police officer, to hire another sewer worker. So, all that, all comes into play. Now, last thing before I get to the students' questions is, we have a state election coming up in November. Now, everybody here with me now is too young to vote. But like we said a minute ago, it is so important to pay attention to who your local county and state offices are. Now, I have never told anybody how to vote and I never will. I don't think that's my place and I'm not smart enough to give any advice on it anyway. But I do have a huge problem when young people say, oh, it's not the president, so I'm not going to vote. That is, that is where I have the biggest problem. Not only, you're, you're not doing things that affect your everyday life, but especially these young black kids, that they need to understand that before we were born, there was a lot of people being killed and beaten for them to have the right to vote. And that's the one time where me and you, our vote counts exactly the same. So, it is the time you have your voice and you can really make a change in your community. Now, that doesn't mean your person's going to win every time, but you took the time and took the effort to exercise your right that not everybody has.
Exactly. I agree one hundred percent. Your, your vote is your voice. That's a common phrase that I hear a lot and, and that's the truth. Voting in local politics is so important, because when you have that pothole in the middle of your house, that makes it hard for you to get home. You can actually pick up and call your council person or your board member and say, can you please get this fixed? You can't, you can't pick up the phone and call the president or your congressperson. More importantly, in that instance, you want to vote, because you don't want, you don't want a person in that council seat or that board seat that's not going to respond to your call. You want to make sure that you vote for someone that's going to be responsive. Now, and here in local elections, we're not voting on national policy. We're not voting on abortion rights or gun legislation, gun legislation. But we're voting on things that touch your everyday life. Whether or not you have adequate water, whether or not you have adequate garbage pickup, whether or not your pothole gets fixed. So, if those things are important to you, it's important for you to vote in that local election, because you don't want somebody in office that's lazy and just collecting a paycheck, quite frankly. You want someone in office that's going to respond to you and care and listen to your concerns. And those everyday kitchen table things really make a difference. What the president, what Congress can do, that can give your local government money to address these problems. And that's what we've seen in Jackson. The federal government, thankfully, is giving six hundred million dollars, as I understand it, to address the water problems. So, we're thankful for that and that's why you want to vote in federal elections as well. But more importantly, when the government sends you that six hundred million dollars, you want to make sure that you have someone in that council seat, in that mayor's seat, that makes sure that everything happens as supposed to happen. And that makes sure that your needs are taken care of with the funds that you get from the federal government.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more, because yeah, the federal government gives them the budget. You need to elect people that are going to use it wisely and use it to your best interest. And, and get your butt in there on election day and vote for somebody that's running. So, again, I can't stress that enough. But I do have some questions. Get to many of these as I can. These are all micro readers. So, these are some really good ones. This first one is Jordan Smith, and he asked, what was your biggest inspiration to run for office?
My biggest inspiration? That's a great question. I would say that it was just a, a lot of things, not one individual thing, just, I majored in political science. So, I've always followed issues in government. I moved about, when I moved to Byram, there was, Byram has just finished a fight with Jackson, an annexation fight with Jackson. So, Byram has just become a city. And the election that I was in was the very first election. And honestly, the, I was told, well, you should, someone suggested to me, you're an attorney, you should run for office in Byram. I had just moved here and I just started paying attention and I realized that, well, I, I do feel like I can bring something to the city. Number one, diversity. At the time, the current board was appointed. And it, you know, they were all great people. I got to know them really, really well and I'm grateful for their service. But I felt like I could bring something different. My youth and my, my, my cultural background. And just being a black female, there were, there was no black female representation on the board. And I felt like diversity is needed and everything. And number one, I was an attorney. So, I felt like with a master's degree in political science and government, so I knew that, I knew everything there was to know from a, from a theoretical standpoint about government. I did not know how to run the city. Practical experience is the best experience that you can have. I knew everything that I was taught in college and St. Louis Government of High School, but I didn't learn, I didn't learn what I need to know about running a city until I actually got in there and started doing it. So, just, just doing a little research about the city of Byram and seeing, just seeing the lack of representation on the current board is really what ultimately inspired me to put my hat in the race.
That's awesome. This is Soraya Day, and she asked, what advice would you give a young person that wanted to get into government?
Make good grades, pay attention to what's going on around you. Make good decisions, make good choices. And just be active in your community. And the main thing is to have a heart for people, because you cannot do this if you do not care and if you, and if you're not a compassionate person. So, the fact that you asked me that question, that gives me the, that, that shows me that you certainly already have a heart for service and compassion and that you want to help people. So, if, because sometimes it, it does get annoying, like working with the current board of Alderman. I'm, there are often times where I am annoyed, quite honestly, because I, sometimes I don't understand why other people don't see things the way that I, that I see them. So, in that instance, you have to remind yours, you have to remember that you're there for the people and not for yourself. So, everybody has to put egos aside and not be consumed with the different personalities and focus on the main thing, which is the people.
Absolutely. I just got a couple more. This is Jatavius White, and he asks, you obviously have a busy schedule. How do you manage all your tasks?
Well, like I was saying, you know, I've been doing managing lots of things at one time in high school. Played basketball on, in, in a show choir, which is completely opposite from basketball. Some of you guys are probably in a band and show choir and, and a sport too, and multiple, more than one sport. So, it's, it's really not that difficult. You just take one day at a time, one thing at a time, one task at a time, at a time, and everything else will fall into place. But if, if you, if you're already juggling a lot in school and with your schoolwork, making good grades and you're involved in extracurricular activities, whatever those activities are, you already have a lot on your plate. So, as you matriculate in the school system, become an adult, it's like, no big deal. It's just a part of life.
Absolutely. I just got one more. This is Kamari Newell, and he asked, what is the hardest part about being a council member?
Not being able to fix everything that needs to be fixed. Not being able to go out to public works and getting public works to respond immediately to fixing a pothole, things like that. Sometimes the money might not be there to fix what you need to fix. And sometimes it's hard for people to understand that you just don't have the ability to make that happen right now. Like we have a lot of roles that need to be paid, but we don't have enough money to pave every road that needs to be paved. And the hardest thing is when someone calls me to say, hey, can I get my road paved? The hardest thing for me is telling that person, I'm sorry, but your road is not on the list to be paved this year. Hopefully, we can do it next year. A lot of people just don't understand that. They don't understand that paving roads are really expensive. And we only have like a twelve million dollar budget here in the city of Byram. On top of that, we have like seventy-two employees. And those employees need insurance and we have to fund our police department, fire, public works. We just don't have a whole lot of money to fix every road every year. So, we have to, so what we do is we go by a list in terms of, as it relates to the road, which road is the worst? And, and we're just going by a list year to year, year to year. And it's hard, sometimes hard for folks to understand that. So, saying that you can't address something, that is the hardest thing, not being able to fix every problem.
Oh, well, we're almost out of time and we thank you so much for taking some time for us today. But before we go, you know, you mentioned the need for diversity in government. And it is so important, especially when you have a diverse area. There really needs to be someone representing every type of person that lives in a community. So, why should these young people be interested and be, and be vigilant in getting involved in their local governments?
Well, don't expect someone else to do it. Sometimes we ignore problems, ignore things, because somebody else will take care of it. Um, sometimes we ignore problems, ignore things because, uh, somebody else take care of it. Oh, yeah, that's bad, but I'll let such and such do it. No, don't be that person. If you have the ability and that wherewithal to do it, do it. You be the change. You fix it. If you can do it, don't wait on someone else. Don't sit on your hands. You do it.
I love it. Great stuff. Well, again, Deandra Hosey, Ward Two, Alderman woman, city of Byram, owner of Deandra Hosey Law Firm. Thank you so much for taking some time for us today.
Thank you. I had a lot of fun, Greg. Thank you.
All right, I'll see you soon, my friend.
Bye-bye.